At this time, we will have the invocation by Assistant Chief Atkins, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Captain Myers.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day of life, Lord, for the many blessings that you give us. We pray that you would bless our city, our state, our nation, Lord. We pray for guidance in all the things that we do. We pray that you would bless our leaders, Lord, and help them to make the good decisions, and we give you all the praise and the glory for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. If you've had time to look at September the second, our minutes, this time I entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments today.
Okay, if you had time, look over the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? The agenda is printed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Item number five. Present a proclamation, Jenny?
Yes. Is it okay if I say?
Sure.
Yeah.
Today, we are proclaiming gynecological, the State of Teal Initiative. And if I'll begin here, whereas gynecologic cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than one hundred and twenty-five thousand women will be diagnosed, and more than thirty-three thousand women will die from these diseases this year. And the absence they leave in our hearts will be deeply felt forever. And whereas the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation and their A State of Teal Initiative brings awareness of all GYN cancers to the people throughout the state of Alabama, and whereas the good health and well-being of women in our state and the city of Jasper are enhanced by increased awareness of GYN cancers and their symptoms and treatment. And whereas, it is also crucial that all women in our state and the city of Jasper take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with GYN cancers, developing healthy habits, and undergoing regular medical examinations so that any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. And whereas, we reflect upon the memory of those lost to these diseases, the bravery of those currently battling these diagnoses, and the need for increased awareness, screening, and research so that women of our state might be spared from them in the future, and encourage citizens to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Brown Shore, President Pro Tem and Council Member, on behalf of Gary Cowan, Mayor of the City of Jasper, and on behalf of the Jasper City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-twenty-five as Gynecological Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all residents of Jasper to work together to raise awareness of GYN cancers, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. This awareness is so important, it has touched all of our families, and it's so important to have this proclamation so that we recognize that and do everything we can to prevent it and deal with it as we move forward. I would ask that anyone from the community who would like to come up, and I would like to give you this proclamation.
Good morning. My name is Jim Crandall with the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation. I want to take just a moment to thank the City of Jasper, the Council, for proclaiming September Gynecologic Awareness, Cancer Awareness Month. We appreciate all you do to help raise awareness in this county and the city, and especially the billboard that you have and you run all month long out on Highway seventy-eight. This morning, I have one of our partners, Dr. Isabel Scorinci from UAB, and she is with Operation Wipeout, who is, whose mission is to eliminate cervical cancer in the state of Alabama. And I'd like her just to take one minute to talk about her work and how we all can get involved and help. Thank you very much again.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here, and I applaud the City of Jasper for having this proclamation. Because every day when I walk to my office, I walk to that waiting, through that waiting room where women are dealing with gynecological cancers, and it's a reminder that we can do better. And out of all gynecological cancers, there's only one, actually, there's only one cancer that can be eliminated. That is cervical cancer. There is no other cancer that can be eliminated. And we are working very hard in Alabama, is called Operation Wipeout, to, because Alabama has one of the highest cervical cancer incidence and mortality in the country. And it's very hard when somebody from Birmingham comes to York County to say Walker has one of the highest incidence in the state. And so, I challenge all of you that we can do something about is HPV vaccination screening, and that women, when they have an abnormal screening, that they come for follow-up. So all of us can spread that message. And so, I am very passionate about that because I have a disease that in nineteen-sixty-three, nobody thought it could be eliminated, and that was polio. And today, when I walk and a young person asks me, "What happened to your leg?", and I say, "I had polio." And to me, it's very rewarding when they say, "What is polio?", so we can do the same with cervical cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. This time, we were, item number six, we're here from Ms. Kelly Barnes.
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
For item A, it is the Clara Brett Benefit Poker Run and Chili Cook-Off Competition requested by the Red Knights Motorcycle Club for Saturday, September twentieth, at the Old Souls Trading Company on Highway sixty-nine South. This event is planned to start at eight AM and end by five PM, and a blockage has been requested for a portion of Martin Luther King Junior Drive from Highway two-sixty-nine to Highway sixty-nine. Item B is the Festival of Lights Tree Lighting Ceremony requested by Hope for Women to be held on the Courthouse Square for Monday, December first, from five to eight PM. And they're not doing any blockages this year for that. And the police, fire, and street departments have given their approvals for those.
Okay, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're here from Lieutenant Jeremy Lay.
Good morning, Council. Lieutenant Lay apologizes he couldn't make it this morning. I'll be presenting in his place. The first item is the consideration of approval for retail beer license and retail wine license for the Five Points Food Mart, which is located at three-zero-two-two Highway one-ninety-five. They have met all the requirements of state law and city ordinances, and the police department does not have any objections to this application.
Okay, at this time, is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public or against, or would I like to make any comments? Going twice, three times, is there a motion to approve the request?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Item number eight, Chief?
The second one is a retail beer license and retail wine license for off-premises consumption for the Star Food Mart, which is located at one-two-seven-five Highway seventy-eight West. They have met all the requirements of state law and city ordinances. The police department does not have any objections to this application.
Okay, this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this matter? Twice, anyone? Three times? Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to accept the request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. This time, we receive a report from Ms. Jessica Cook.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Morning.
For item number nine, we received two responses to the Tires, Tubes, and Services contract. I recommend we award this contract to Southern Tire Mart, who has, who was the lowest responsible bidder. And for item B, I recommend the contract for inmate food be awarded to Sun's Supermarket, who was our only bidder for this contract.
Okay, Southern Tire Mart and Sun's Supermarket.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the request from Ms. Cook. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Item number ten, Ms. Cook.
For item number ten, I request permission to send bids for landscaping services for City Hall.
Okay, she needs permission to send bids. There's a motion to give her permission.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eleven and twelve, Ms. Kathy Chalmers.
And Council members, the budget amendment for today that was introduced, or that our mayor asked for you to do today by unanimous consent, has to do with engineering design improvements at Memorial Park, one-hundred-eighty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and lighting for the new equipment shed for the street department, sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-two dollars.
Okay, this is a budget amendment, so we must have unanimous consent. I will entertain a motion and second that the rules be suspended, unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of action in said budget amendment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, the motion for unanimous consent has been immediately considered, and I've said budget amendment has unanimously carried. Now, I will entertain a motion and second that the budget amendment be finally approved.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. The motion for approval of this budget amendment has been unanimously carried, and budget amendment has been approved. Thank you.
Josh and the mayor are successful today on their.
Quest for fines.
And their quest to help with those fines.
Item number twelve, Ms. Chalmers.
And Council members, at the work session on Friday, we went through the budget for what we believe will be introduced, well, we're introducing it today for the twenty-five-twenty-six physical year. Just a couple of comments about that budget, and we, we're not going to go through the details of that budget. But we will be increasing revenue two percent to bring what we believe the general fund revenue to be thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight million seven-hundred thousand. The budget will also provide a step raise for city employees, which will be effective in January. The budget will provide four million seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand in support of city agencies, and this will include a million-dollar extra support for the Jasper City Schools. We will be providing a million dollars for a, that will go towards a new paving plan that will be developed soon. And then, a half a million dollars from the general fund to go towards capital improvements that the department heads will bring to you as we proceed in our new physical year. And that's just an introduction today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chalmers. This is an introduction today. There will, no action will be taken at this time. Item number thirteen, well, Ms. Chalmers?
And if the mayor were here, he would handle this, but he has asked that I bring this to the council. This is for the on-call engineering service from Sane Engineering. He's requesting that you allow him to sign that contract. There's no changes from last year. The contract is for sixty-five thousand.
Okay, you heard the request by the mayor. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Item number fourteen, Ms. Chalmers?
And Council members, today, we have a number of public hearings to do for a resolution to set costs for the abatement of nuisances that have been approved by the council in previous meetings. So the first piece of property is located at sixteen-oh-eight Barker Street, Barker Street. It's property that belongs to Judy Bland in District Five, and is three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and that was for mowing overgrown grass and weeds. So if Ms. Bland is here, this would be a good time for her to come forward.
Anyone here on behalf of Ms. Bland, or Ms. Bland, if you're here to speak? If not, we'll move right on.
Next piece of property is twenty-three-oh-one Greenwood Circle, property belonging to Raymond and Alice Dunn. This was in District Five, and this is three, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars also for overgrown grass and weeds.
Is there anyone here to speak on their behalf? Okay.
Next piece of property, fifteen-oh-one Alabama Avenue, property belonging to Helen Ivy. This is District One, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, overgrown grass and weeds.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on their behalf? Okay, move right on. Go to the next one.
Four-oh-two Glenview Drive, Charlotte Gunner Cook, District Four, one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, overgrown grass and weeds.
Okay, anyone here to speak on their behalf? There's no one here, so we'll move right on.
Ten-oh-eight Eleventh Avenue West, property belonging to Ben and Jeffrey Norris, District Two, nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And that was the removal of an unsafe structure.
Okay, anyone here on their behalf? There's no one here, so we'll move. Okay, is that, that all?
That's all.
Okay, you've heard the request for the unsafe structures and the, and grass and high weeds. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Pass, I'll make a motion and second. All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're here from our building instructor, Mr. Adam Bolton.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Consider adoption of a resolution for nuisance abatement on two unsafe structures. The addresses of those unsafe structures are nine-oh-nine Birmingham Avenue. The other is just a parcel number, and it's sixty-four dash seventeen dash oh-two dash oh-nine dash one dash one-zero-four dash oh-five-six zero-zero-zero.
All right, is that, that's all your requests?
Yes, that's the only two.
You've heard the motion for the, I mean, the request for the unsafe structures. Is there a motion?
Those are both your districts. You are correct.
I didn't see the first one.
You didn't see the first?
I didn't see the first one, the nine-oh-nine. Can you put that back up? The nine-oh-nine, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm good.
Again, then I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, Mr. Bolton, grass and high weeds.
Council, consider adoption of a resolution for nuisance abatement on two properties. The first property is eleven-seventeen Twenty-first Street West, and the second property is Castle Village Highway Five, and it's multiple vacant lots.
The second one is District Four. Do you know what the first one, because Twenty-first, we can share that.
I'm sorry, I do not. I think it would be District Four.
You think both of them are?
I think.
Okay, you've heard the request. If no more questions, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're here from Mr. Terry Acuff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What we're here today is to discuss a land and water conservation grant, application the city's considering applying for. You're required first to have a public hearing, which we've advertised in the newspaper, to discuss the proposed improvements that you have proposed at Memorial Park. I know you have a lot of things you're doing outside of what we're asking you to do with land and water conservation at Memorial Park, but you have a grant eligibility to apply for these funds through the Alabama Department of Economic Community Affairs. It's money that comes from the Department of Interior. Memorial Park is already a land and water conservation fund park, which that means it's a park forever. No matter what happens, it's always a park. But there are some drainage issues in the park related to the lake that need to be fixed immediately. There are some improvements to the parking lot that need to be made because the drainage issues created problems, and also, there's a new pavilion that's being proposed to be built. But you're eligible to apply for a million dollars in grant funds. The match is fifty percent. What your engineer has proposed is a one-million-six-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred-dollar project to make those improvements, of which eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars of that would be paid for with grant funds. It's something that my understanding, especially the drainage issue, is something we need to try to address. No, it'll be related to the other things you're doing, but we need to get that fixed first. So with that, I'll answer any questions the public may have, and then you'll have a resolution to consider approving the mayor to sign that application.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that have any questions or comments in reference to what Mr. Acuff has mentioned? Okay, going once, no comments. Okay. At this time, entertain a motion?
I will make that motion.
And I will second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're here from our attorney, Mr. Russ Robertson.
Good morning, Council. As you know, as we do these nuisance abatements, particularly with regard to unsafe structures, some questions have arisen concerning chiefly the right of anyone to have possession of the debris that is generated by the demolition and of any personal property that might be located on these properties where the nuisance abatements are taking place. No one is trying to do anything incorrect, but it's difficult to tell what the correct answer is. So in other words, when, for one example, when a building is demolished and it has metal in it, is the demolition contractor free to go salvage that metal, or must it all be carried to the landfill? And we just can't, can't have an answer to that. There's not a clear answer that's available in the law. So I proposed, and, and the mayor asked me to present it to the council, to seek an Attorney General's opinion so that the Attorney General of the State of Alabama reviewing state law and reviewing our ordinance can tell us what the correct answer to that conundrum is. Specifically, the resolution would call for us to submit the following questions. One, whether the debris from demolition of unsafe structures may be used by the demolition contractor for a private purpose such as salvage or fill material, or whether it must be deposited in the municipal landfill. Second, whether personality located on the site of an unsafe structure which is designated for demolition is required to be removed and retained for the benefit of the landowner, or whether it may be taken by the contractor or others either before or during the demolition. And I think if we can get an answer to these questions, we can incorporate the correct answer into our contracts that we use for future demolition projects, and just make sure that everybody's doing right. And again, no one's trying to do anything wrong or sneaky. Everybody wants to comply with the law. We just need clarification on what the law is.
Okay, we've heard the request to consider adoption from our attorney. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
And I will second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number nineteen, Ms. Chalmers?
And Council members, we introduced in the last council meeting a amendment to our garbage ordinance that would increase the residential garbage fee from nineteen dollars to twenty-two a month, as well as the businesses that have containers that are currently fifty dollars would go to fifty-eight dollars. And then, an increase for the businesses that have dumpsters from forty dollars per pickup to forty-five dollars per pickup. And the scale would go up if you have more than one pickup. If you have an extra can, your fee will go from a ten dollar for that extra can to eleven dollars. And this was all a result of the city having to pay the tipping fee now that once we were able to go to the county landfill over at Bryan, and that was no charge to the city, and now we have to pay a tipping fee. So strictly to just try to offset the added cost of disposing of garbage. So, strictly to just try to offset the added cost of disposing of garbage, and that, this is now ready for your approval today. It would take effect October the first.
Okay, we've discussed this in length, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Yes.
I will second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Robertson?
It is before the council to adopt an ordinance to levy a license tax in the nature of sort of an excise tax on the sale of consumable vapor products. The ordinance provides a definition of those vapor products, it provides the imposition of a license tax in the amount of ten cents per milliliter, and it provides that this assessment is in addition to the regular sales tax, et cetera. That's not unique, we have additional taxes for alcohol, cigarettes, this just brings vapor products into that realm.
Okay, we've discussed this in work session in, in length as well, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item twenty-one, Adam Bolton?
Good morning again, council. Russ has informed me that you can adopt these as a group or individually, it's up to you. So, which would you like to do?
Let's take them individually.
Individually?
Yes.
Okay. Item twenty, conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance rezoning a one point, or, excuse me, a point one-six acre parcel of land at to-be-determined Twenty-seventh Street East Jasper, Alabama. And that would be go- going from R-three, R-two single family to an R-three affordable
Okay, I'm good with it.
You're good.
Yeah, I know what it said. Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, okay.
Item twenty-one, conduct a public hearing considering adoption of ordinance of a one acre parcel of land located adjacent to Highway one ninety-five near Breakville Dairy Road at five points. It would go from a business transition zoning district to a B-two commercial service zoning district.
Okay, is there anyone here at this time, like, speak on this behalf, for or against? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion for the request.
I'll ma- I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, thank you.
Item twenty-two, conduct a public hearing considering adoption of ordinance rezoning one point five acre parcel of land located at forty-five Old Rock Quarry Road, and that would go from a R-one single-family resident zoning district to a B-two, which is community service zoning district.
Okay, you heard the request. Is there anyone here, any audience to speak on this behalf, for or against? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you.
Item twenty-three, conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of a, of an ordinance rezoning a point one-six acre parcel of land located at seventeen oh four and seventeen oh four and a half Euclid, from R-one single-family zoning to a R-four urban dwelling zoning district to allow multiple-family rental.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on this behalf, for or against? Okay, council, you okay? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, thank you.
Item twenty-four, conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance rezoning a point two-five acre parcel of land located at five oh five Alabama Avenue. It would go from R-one single-family residence zoning district to a BT, which is business transition zoning district for future office space, non-retail.
Okay, is there anyone here, any audience to speak, for or against this, set action? If not, I entertain a motion this time?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Item twenty-five, conduct a public hearing considering adoption of an ordinance rezoning a two-point-two acre parcel of land located at twenty-three thirty-six North Wallston Bridge Road, and that would go from a R-three affordable housing zoning district to a B-one, which is neighborhood center zoning district to develop future commercial interests.
Okay, is there anyone in the public here to speak, for or against? Okay, if not, we entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Item twenty-six, conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance rezoning a one acre parcel of land located at twenty-three forty North Wallston Bridge Road, from R-one single-family zoning district to a business transition zoning district to develop future commercial interests.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience to speak on this behalf? If not, we entertain a motion this time?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will receive any comments from the audience. If anyone in the audience have any comments, will you please step to the podium, just to my right, and give your name, address, and if you know your district, your district that you're in. Right over there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Wilma Abrams, and I live in District Five. Thank you. And I am here today just seeking clarity as far as the street department. For all summer long, I have had debris in the alleyway behind my home, and at first I'm told that they don't pick it up. I continue to call. Eventually, someone comes to pick some up, and then I called again yesterday, and I am told that I need the name of who is putting things in the alleyway, and I just, I don't know what to do. I mean, do they pick up in the alleyway or not?
Okay, Mr. Wade, do you want to answer that, since that's your department first, before I do my comments?
Were you able to hear what he said?
Is a contractor palling individual?
No, so, if someone comes in as a contractor, it's not the owner of the house, I, I make sure I'm saying this right, to do work on the house, the contractors know, are supposed to know.
Well, I don't know who did it.
Right.
I saw one person back there doing this, and there was no, nothing that stated that it was like, it was just an individual from the neighborhood that was clearing the property.
Okay.
And I did not go back there because it was not mine, but again, am I supposed to call every time something is placed there, or is that, does the city drive around as far as like the trash pickup day to just observe, or a- am I supposed to call?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say as well that there is pickup on the days in that area that you get your garbage picked up.
Okay.
Occasionally, though, yes. If it says, well, I call every once in a while if I have something specific, or if I see that someone's put something out. Okay. You're just getting cleaned up.
Thank you.
If you ha- so, my recommendation is, yes, typically, things will get picked up on your garbage day route, but call down there if, if something doesn't get picked up.
Do I need to have the name of who put it there, or?
I've never been asked that.
Well, see, well, here's the problem. It's not the first resident, it's not the first time. It happens all the time in District Five.
Yes, it does.
They come, they pick up half of it, and then they tell you they're not gonna pick it up. First, they'll tell you they didn't pick it up, and they'll tell you that it's a contractor, and my visual eyes have seen the people putting it out there, and they're not contractors. Now, when they never come over there, I don't know how they know it's a contractor, and they never saw it. But this has been going on for three months at least. When they picked it up, they got partial, part of it. Now, the rest of it's kind of scattered, but we did go and start picking it up, and then one more trip, and it'd been all gone. So, that's happening a lot in our, in our district, and I'm getting a lot of complaints from it, and I do want to talk to the mayor about it because we need to get a better understanding to the public or within ourselves, because when someone asks me, I tell them, put it to the road on your garbage day, they're gonna pick it up. That's the way that I've always known it to be, and that's what I tell the people in my district. So, this problem needs to be addressed, it is a big problem, along with some other things that I'll discuss with him, but it's time out for this. I mean, we're, we're, we're giving people citations about high weeds and grass, about nuisance abatement, unsafe structures, and even people are trying to follow those rules and clean up. Now, we're telling them we're not gonna pick up, and that's what I thought, that's the purpose of us having those vehicles, just bought a brand-new piece of equipment for that. And I don't even see the truck in my district much anymore. I call Mr. Wade, he'll try to address it and do, but then sometime he can't do it, but it's a problem.
Billy, I couldn't hear you well a while ago, but I think you were saying that it's, there's also lack of communication or confusion with the drivers because not always knowing if it's a contractor or not. When people are working on a house as a contractor, Adam, don't they have to come and get a contractor? They're supposed to get a license.
Perhaps this is a great item for the next work session, because it sounds like we need to have a process in place so that everyone knows what their role is, and if someone doesn't come in and get a contractor's license, it's not up to you as the citizen to determine where the garbage came from, who put it, when did they put it? So, I think this could go in the next work session, let's figure out a process.
Be ready for a little.
Wait, Billy wants to say one more thing.
So, Adam, the street department, the permitting department, code enforcement, if we can all be there at the next work session, and Kathy, let's put that on there and get this corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and addressing that. Now, we're gonna have it at the work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams. Is there anyone else have any comments, or would you like to come to the podium and make any comments? Okay, Kathy, is there anything else?
The mayor didn't provide any comments, but I know if he were here, he would thank everyone that was involved in Foothills Festival. It was a great event. He did send an email out Sunday night to all of his department heads, thanking them and all the other organizations and supporters that came in that supported the Foothills Festival. I know it was largely attended, and just another great event for the city of Jasper.
Okay, thank you. For those of you that don't know, the mayor's not goofing off today, he's out working for the city of Jasper, so he's in Montgomery.
So is Josh.
And they are all in.
And, and Josh, they're trying to get something going for the city in Montgomery, so we do appreciate them doing that. This time, we're receiving any comments from any council members?
I just echoed that as well, that was a fantastic Foothills Festival, I think biggest crowd I'd ever seen on a Friday night, too. But we had a blast, and thanks to Chief Upton for coming out and doing the stanky leg with the, with the drink pit, but I, thanks to all the employees. I know sometimes y'all get hit, and, but y'all did a fantastic job, and cleaned it up really well, too, really quick.
Absolutely, it's amazing when you can go downtown on Sunday morning, and after having, the numbers that we're getting so far are thirty-five thousand plus people in town, and you go downtown the next morning, and it's clean as a whistle.
There goes town. Okay, thank you. If no more comments, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.